Yeah.
Wobbling for you? Yeah, it's it's sort of cutting out.
Yeah.
Because they haven't gotten started yet. It's the feedback from people not being close enough to.
Come on, we'll sit on the stairs. I don't know, this is too close if anybody wants to hit it. Her eggs, as long as the rainbow doesn't show up with eggs. Did you hear about that?
Yeah. Her father's daughter. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not too bad for you. We had us to drive over.
It was fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a little bit soupy in the way here. I mean, my driveway is like sliding down.
Well, we had somebody that did with the roads what they're supposed to do. What?
They were sketchy last night.
Dude, last night.
Right, I'm not gonna until I have.
No. Okay, so. Um. I rode with Alyssa to the ranch last night to get uh shuttered from work. It's mostly just at ten. We got down into cutting, it rolled back, we got down in the cutting still. Thank God she has studded snow tires. Because it was bad.
Sixty postage. Sixty eight cents.
Yeah, that sucks.
Two W T yeah. For all the volume.
Yeah, no, they were sketchy last night.
It's a toast wall. That's okay. If you want. Maybe Kevin, I shouldn't. Then we went through the same light. I can.
Were you thinking one fourth?
I'm gonna make it. Pulling back a little bit more, would that be? I can, I'll just stand until. That's a good idea. But yeah, well, apparently.
The dirt road going up to the ranch.
Oh, ranch.
Spring like.
Oh, God.
You oh, my God.
You wanna have fun, take them back.
I know, I took that road once.
Yeah.
That's sketchy.
Good.
Yeah, that's.
We'll just have our horses run the other side of that.
Yeah. Yeah, that road sucks on a eighty degree day.
And Brenda asked, and I went to bring grapes for you and I forgot.
Oh, that's okay.
And coffee?
I think you're great.
Yeah.
For this stuff down here. Actually, we need to budget some.
Yes, I did see those, I assumed you were gonna get them, but I didn't see them.
What?
Yeah. I didn't realize we did that many different things.
Yeah.
She's after apple here.
So. Yeah, it's good to revisit it.
It is.
And it's and it's good to set it up so that we revisit it. You know, I don't wanna go too far out, but like maybe three-ish years.
Just getting harder and.
Yeah, exactly, so people forget about it.
Yeah.
But I I think it's a good to reintroduce it and just so it gets put in front of everybody's faces again. And be like.
Yeah, cuz it should be a one and done.
What does city do here?
It makes it hard to breathe. Starts to feel like someone's like, you know that feeling when you get punched in the stomach? Like you can't breathe and it hurts a lot?
Yes.
That's what it's like. And so slowly over time, I, you know, just get more agitated. That's what I'm getting fixed, yeah. Is it a rip thing or?
No, it's a leg. Yeah, it's getting physically one of the arteries not working.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, kinda.
He walked a while, that's. I had those one time. Something of a coworker, she had an open road, open area.
Seems like a bad place, I'm like.
Cuz mine was down here and I can't even imagine how much pain he has up here.
I broke six in mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Broke, broke, six in mine. Uh threw it, hit a stone, threw the other one up. I laid on the ground, but it came back down, the handle by a friend, my rings. It was fun.
It wasn't that bad, I was um dogs letting out behind plants and he had a front end of Cali reach out there. The dogs weren't even much fine, my plant hit the Cali branch and just stopped. And I was right on the road, so I ran. Didn't do anything at all, but I got back home, I finished taking care of the dogs, you know, got back in the house, sat down, and also like.
That hurts. Yeah. Yeah. I was black and blue from my hip to up in the here.
Yeah.
It was weird, it was just, it was bad.
No, did they wrap them at all? Cuz they probably knocked and not.
This was when I was.
Oh, younger?
Fifteen, sixteen, so it was a couple years ago.
Yeah, that's.
Yes. Smart ass. It happened right down here at the town property. I was calling ass on the, in the, where by Davey's head roll, I was calling ass out through there. And I didn't realize it was a boulder about this big, well, the front tire caught, and it cranked the wheel, and it threw the wheel up. And then I kind of flew and landed, but it landed, when I landed, it landed and.
No, they they wrapped you up, did you still have to drink? You put at least once an hour to get all the oxygen out of your lungs? I'm sorry.
That was bad, it was, oh God. Yeah. One of the worst pains I've ever felt in my life.
Yeah.
Make it.
Yeah, cuz I, cuz I was lying there by going, I'm working on the half a mile. Two days, it's max, I never had on my greatest two days. The days are longer though.
Yeah, they are.
There's more money every day. And it's like after three now. Yep, there's that too. Yeah, I'll just wanted to make some copies of the uh. Warning, but we are approving, she'll be there. Sorry. That is exciting. Does Greg know about the storytelling? Did you tell him about it? Did you tell Greg about the storytelling? Get a kick out of that.
So that's, that that call sucked. Well, the thing is, is. The thing is, is that uh Chittenden and Proctor and Pittsford weren't responding. So then Killington says like tone out Tim for their tanker and I'm like shit. So then Chittenden responded in a lot, few seconds after Proctor responded. And I'm like, sweet, so then they told, then they canceled us, I was like, that's awful. It was thirty seven minutes with the tanker, that's, that's a fifty minute hour. That sucked. Yeah. Yeah, right. Important to joke. I've never, I've never heard of bringing too much water to the fire.
Do you want that stool back or not? Do you want what's in your stomach for anything? Probably. It happens, but okay. Yeah, we're ready to go. Okay. Is it record, recording and everything? Yeah, it's been recording. Perfect.
Did I say anything that's?
Twenty minutes.
Can we edit out?
Well, now we're officially calling the meeting ordered. All right, welcome everyone. To our special Tim the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, January twenty fifth. Twenty twenty four, I almost said the sixteenth cuz that's what it says on my paper. Um. It's Thursday. See, I'm just reading the script, I could just have one of those boxes and I'd just be reading my words. Nope, you're right, it is Thursday. All right, so we're gonna go over. Our, we have a few things on our agenda. And then we'll have um. Did we put in here time for discussion? We wanna do like questions?
Yes, that's what.
Yeah. I see the beginning part now, I apologize. All right, the first part of this meeting is a question and answer period for anybody who is here and wants to ask the select board about. Uh how we, any of our um. Anything on the budget, we are voting on the annual allotments. Uh and we also had some questions about um. The informational meeting and when to set that. And anything else you would like to? Bring up. Feel free, this is like a pre-town meeting informational meeting, town meeting informational.
How's that go again?
Yeah, repeat it.
Well, the purpose of this meeting is allow voters to have some say on. The budgets or town meeting issues. With the town meeting being all posturing about it, now you have the informational meeting within ten days. They can tell picture stuff, but they don't get to ask questions. You know, they can ask questions, they can have an input this way here, they look at the grand budget and say, hey, you're paying them down, what if you watch? Then you could. That's, that's the purpose of this, is we call out people who have a little bit of input. There are copies of the agenda and the budgets, people, back there on the. What do you plan on having?
Well, it'll either be the Saturday before or the Monday before, those are our two options. So.
Are we gonna talk about that now?
We can, why not?
So this is not pre-pre town?
This is, this is pre-pre town meeting, yes, we just.
I would, I would like to say Saturday because I know a lot of people vote early and um. If we leave this night before, a lot of people have already voted and not had the input of the informational meeting. Makes sense to have sooner rather than later in my term.
Yep. Sherry?
Uh when you are talking, we can't, if they're carrying on a conversation, we can't hear them, we just hear like weird stuff. So I'm gonna ask if a person's speaking, if they would get a little closer to the owl so we can see them and we can hear what they're saying, thank you.
Dad, I don't think this is working.
We can try it. I was beyond.
Okay, do you need me to repeat what I said? How's that work, Sherry? Does that look good?
Good, but it's, it's when people in the audience talk.
Sherry and everybody else, I was just saying that I would prefer to have it on Saturday since so many people vote early. And then if they, if it's the day before, then they don't have the um. Hearing the informational meeting ahead of time. So I was, I was saying for me, I think Saturday works better.
I agree with Holly.
And didn't you say it can be up to ten days before? Or like we wanna do it the Saturday before the Saturday before to try to address that people voting early issue? Only because we've never done it, and maybe that won't actually work.
Yeah, what would that date be, the?
February twenty fourth.
Twenty.
This. Saturday. I'm not attached, I'm rolling it out.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing is, is if we have it scheduled for then, the weather is probably, then we can postpone it without having. Too much to accomplish.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't make sense. We have issues on like twenty four, we're twelve in back.
We have a time. Are we gonna hit one o'clock? What time are we doing these days?
Right, I think we had it set for one P M, it was on Saturday.
And and that's exactly ten days before, I just counted. So we could put it out there, the twenty fourth, the the date, and then the fourth, the, no, the second and the alternate date.
But we have to be careful how we word that, cuz some people might show up second instead of first. If they say it's the twenty one. Right, but that has to be changed, and to put it on a bunch more. I think a little icon will figure out what it is.
Yeah.
I think we did the three days on our.
I think we can bump anybody that we want. Not positive.
You done that? Or anything else today with WhatsApp? Did you guys get a chance to see the agenda and the budget?
Hi all, this is Nancy, can I speak?
Yeah.
Um I had a couple of things, one, for those, I actually have to get, I have to leave in a few minutes for another meeting. But for those of us on Zoom, uh Joe, you're not muted, so your, the sound from your home is part of our meeting. That's so, I don't know if you know how to mute your.
No, I don't. No, I have.
Oh, you got it, thank you. Um and then I had two other things, just if, not anything to do with upcoming town meeting, but that I just, because this is sort of our. Community discussion time. Um, one was for the select board, thinking about the housing crisis in the state and the future of Tinmouth and all of that. Whether it would be worth having a community discussion or putting on the planning commission radar. Whether there's some part of town that could support more dense development. Um. And I don't know if there is, but you know, just thinking about some of the land areas in town. You know, could there be a conversation about community housing or elderly housing or something like that? And I know it came up at a planning commission meeting a while back, a couple months ago. Or Michael sort of dropped the idea of elderly housing, but anyway, wanted to mention that. Um and then the other thing that while. The select board has been planning ahead for the cost of equipment, et cetera. And building infrastructure, which is phenomenal, I've been thinking about the fact that. Our incredible town clerk and treasurer, who does so much in so many areas. Is going to be impossible to replace when she gets to the point of being ready for retirement. And it's very likely that multiple people will need to take various positions, the, the. Salary structure could change, but I was thinking that's something the select board might be thinking, want to be thinking ahead towards. Because you might wanna be setting some money aside to prepare. But anyway, it's just a couple of things that I've been thinking about, thank you very much.
This is Colleen, um, I was just wondering. Even what Gail is saying is coming through pretty muffled for those of us who aren't there, maybe those of you who are close to Mike from night repeat. Statements or questions so we could hear them, just a thought, thank you.
Might be better now. Friend loses all.
I would just like to second what uh Nancy emphasized, the idea of. Uh. Discussing the possibility of uh. More dense housing, maybe in the village center or just to create opportunities for uh young people, starter homes. Uh because there's a housing crisis all throughout the state and Tim is not exempt from that.
I guess my question would be, how do you guarantee that the young people would actually be able to afford houses? And not a millionaire that's buying an Apple's and be that's all.
Uh we, we can guarantee, there's no guarantees, but we can make um. We can sort of grease the skids, make it easier for young people. Uh instead of, you know. Um having minimum lot size of five acres, ten acres.
But if we have a compact urban area, that goes against what historically Tim's citizens have wanted, which is. Well, as somebody who's lived here almost her entire life, I appreciate the little aspect of Timbit.
Michael, did you want to?
So as the, I'm Michael Fowler, the chair of the planning commission, uh I've been on the planning commission for the past twenty years. And we have, uh we have, that whole concept has gone through many iterations. And if you're interested in that concept, um my suggestion would be to show up to a planning commission meeting. Um and that is an opportunity where you can talk to. The people on the planning commission about the limitations of um that concept. And if you, if you dive a little bit into what the state of Vermont is actually saying. We don't necessarily have a housing crisis, uh we have plenty of housing, it's a lot, there's a lot of housing that people just don't want to rehab. Um it's the type of housing, it is, we are not necessarily, we're really not in a housing crisis per se. And I think if you did a little bit of investigation, um you might realize that, you know, that is actually very true statewide, it is. Um we have housing, it's just the people who, you know, are moving here don't necessarily want to renovate it.
I'm gonna strongly disagree with the statement that we do not have a housing crisis, and I think uh most of people in this room would. Uh, you know, see the reality of that.
Yeah, I, I agree with, because housing, my daughter's open for a house, the cheapest thing she can find is just over four hundred thousand. And I don't have any, the working people can afford the mortgage on that kind of house at today's interest rates. So. We do have a crisis. At least for working people to to find a place to live. Wouldn't make more money elsewhere, they're gone, they're not staying.
And if the chair of the planning commission thinks we don't have the prices. Wow, I'm, you know, that's a strong statement.
Well, that's what I heard from the regional planning commission, so I'm actually like talking for real for him, so. There you go.
I, I have a question. Sure. So. If we were to look at higher density somewhere, let's just say the town center. If you were going to make a house affordable, you would have to make it sort of a condominium or. What we used to call apartments uh that are smaller, but how do you do that if you don't have water and sewer? And I think that's the biggest issue with looking to develop in rural areas as opposed to places that already have water and sewer. So in a rural area, you could put a house here and a house there. And maybe make in, say, town center, the lot size smaller, but I don't know that you could do higher density without water and sewer infrastructure.
I, I think maybe the key word is affordable.
Yes. Yes. You know, the houses that are going to be built. The, the, the housing development that's going to, are going to be not affordable for the average person.
Tracy, it's been, you know, we've tried it before in town here, this is Colleen on the south end of town, on the south end of um Mountain View, October Hill. And the model there was to develop a single water well and a single waste treatment that was shared between a number of units. And I don't think it ever fully got um implemented, and it was probably, I think, only meant to have three dwellings. They were standalones, um. They were standalones. Um, but I think it would mean, you know, they're, I don't know if that's possible in other settings or not, but it's been tried.
But then you have wealthy people that are in there. If you set something like this up, they're going to snatch it up. Before it gets to anyone that can afford it, they're going to take it first.
There are, there are definitely ways that, like the land trust has, um, we did have two, now we have one. Um, a headburn farm, four go have, we have a limit, who can do it? So like members and family, uh, those lots can't be sold.
I can't hear it. I can't hear what was just said.
Uh, so lots like the land trust did, we use, well, we also had a genuine development, which unfortunately we don't. Like the one down at Roy's, there was seven, like four houses, chairman, a well and a subject. And then two thousand and eight came along, everything crashed and nothing came out of that. Um, and the rest of the old lots, I wouldn't believe it, went back. But on the headburn farm, that was another land trust, uh, year where there are four affordable housing lots that can only be used for that. There were other ways of writing into your zoning, et cetera, uh, ways. And, and, and the high end people aren't going to come and buy them. They're looking for the, like, John, I found, he was the big pieces of property in Warren acreage. For the average person, you know, maybe those, and then I think the answer to the question on the subject, it may not be this, the center is what I can. I mean, standing over spoke a few years ago, finding a place that could, um, have a, you know, we suck it. And then build houses around that. You could make, you know, places where it can happen. It takes planning, it takes looking at it, it takes opening up the communities. No, we're not going to look for the government. I don't, I don't work. Democrats, it's Democrats, Tim was, had one dairy farm. And so we're not a dairy farm in town anymore. Um, so we're, we're evolving into something and it's, it's just, um, what's been happening late. Uh, very local people buying up most of the town, waiting on, or anybody in the town to buy it up. And that's where the rest of the town is going to go. We don't make some decisions, um, um, making different parts of it more available to, to, um, some old people. They don't have to land, we didn't. We did not, I'm born and fought.
Well, I think, you know, there's value in having a larger tax base for a budget that keeps going up. And anyone else on that or something else?
I can't hear that.
I'm American, and it's mission also.
Still can't hear it.
The places that need houses, we don't. Well, we have one down around the corner. It's three hundred thousand. That's a long one. Just put a platform and most times it's a drum up. You'd be better off. So losing that, so. Yeah, I think that's hard for the land. Kind of folks want to come and that's sure. They need a house. And that rent is free, expensive. And I could see some kind of, if I'm a house, because I believe a lot of town, the youth and the young are really squirming. I just sort of go by time every time. I just don't want to get a whole place coming just vacation land or a town. So I am, uh, I do think we have some, help them, pretty good. I know they, we don't, the commission have a rehab, they are basically certainly using. But it's, uh, it's not cheap neither. Sometimes you'll get what you want.
For those on Zoom, uh, if you couldn't hear, that was Larry Carew. I'm going to very, I'm just going to paraphrase Larry. Let me know if I do it wrong. He was agreeing that there was a housing crisis for young people. And he is a member of the planning commission. And he feels like rehabbing or doing houses is sometimes as expensive for, also just as preventative.
Correct.
Yeah. Anyone else on that or something else?
I have a question. Given, given that it's really, really hard to understand anybody, uh, when you are zooming in and that I think the town meeting last year, same problem, we couldn't hear a thing. I wonder if it's possible to look into and maybe budget for a new system with better sound rendition? I don't, I have no idea how much they cost, but it feels like for those people who can't or don't want to attend in person, um, it would be a little easier to understand what's going on.
Certainly could look into it. It might be an honor just having a speaker, a better figure, or a microphone type thing in the center or that people speak into.
You're very clear, but anybody in the audience, it just is like they're underwater.
Sorry about that.
Some places do that by having more than one owl. We're reboating small underdolvers, sorry. But that, I can check with owl, we'll see if there's any.
I was like, if it was like this happening, that there could be, like, an additional speaker.
My heart, my heart, yeah.
I will see what we can do for that maybe.
Are you following the agenda or are we just?
We're doing the first part, which is just like, uh, open and question and answer. There's a paragraph above that where we just are gathering information and question and answer period.
Um, I would like, and I'm sorry because this is probably an awful topic, but I would like to learn more about the common level of appraisal and what, uh, we are thinking that is going to do to taxes. Um, because I, I think I heard it's really low. Um, I will say that many people pay their taxes based on their income, which will be a much less of tax. So I want to make clear as we're talking about it, that we make sure we can talk about, there's sort of two ways that people's taxes are covered. But I don't know what the CLA is and I don't know what it's going to do to the tax rate. I think you have a guess and no one will hold you to specific numbers.
Well, the, what the state set is sixty of a hundred. And the psych ward is going to appeal that, just in the options that are reappraisal, it's not accepted by the state. We are doing a reappraisal and it should bring our CLA to one. When you do a reappraisal, so the tax bills that go out this year, our CLA will be one.
And our hope is that that will be done in time for the.
It's going to be done. We sent our plan in and I got an email today that said, well, we'll, we'll look at what your plan is for reappraisal. We're going to send you something, but call me before, don't panic, call me before you. So that's why I'm editing my, that's why we're also appealing the CLA. Because they use some sales that we don't think are appropriate and they should have done, we can request them to do appraisals on their own. Because we have so few sales, one or two sales can really skew the CLA going. You know, there's one place at the lake that we have assessed at a hundred and eighty-one thousand and it sold for five hundred and fifty-two thousand. So that sale, you know, you need to bounce that one out because it's just, but if you only have four sales around the lake, the state really wants to use it.
Yeah, I can explain what sixty out of a hundred means.
That means the common level appraisal is everybody's supposed to be at a hundred percent. So if the town is at sixty percent, a hundred thousand dollar value of property, we would have it assessed at sixty thousand. And so what the CLA does is it tries to equalize towns all over the state that are at various levels of CLA to, to bring them back to one percent. So the statewide tax rate is applied to everybody equally. But the CLA study itself has got some problems and it wasn't designed to be used for what it's being used for right now.
And, um, I just want to appreciate how quickly, I'm going to say you, Gail, but you and your team are trying to get this appraisal done because, um, you know, and we're talking about the school tax rate that is statewide. So if the school tax rate is, just pick a number because it's easy, two dollars. And we're at fifty, because that's an easier number than fifty, to do the math on, then we would pay four dollars. Unless your, uh, tax rate is set based on your income. So it's potentially a, a big escalator. And as Gail says, when you're such a small town and you have so few sales, a couple million dollar houses throw everything way out of whack. So if that is able to be accepted, then that will be awesome.
We're doing our best.
And understanding that a third go up, a third go down, and a third stay the same is the common guidance. But there's nothing common about our housing situation right now.
And that third going up, the third going down, and the third staying the same is if the budget stays the same. And the budgets go up, either the town budget and the school budget, then that sometimes goes up.
But I think where people need to remember is if a town set, like your budget in here is saying, you know, a thousand dollars. So even if appraisal went way up, the rate will go down. But with this state tax, as our pre-sales go up, the rate's going to go. I mean, the amount you're going to pay because you're paying into the system, not a set budget for the town. So our taxes could, could go up quite a bit.
It could go up.
On the school side.
They could go up on the school side because the state's tax, school tax is going to go up. It gets a double whammy. If the CLA goes down, then the school tax goes up even more. But from what I hear, the school budget is point zero seven percent increase. So it's, you know, our school budget, school budget, what it's supposed to be.
I also just want to thank you, Gail, and Douglas McCarter, who really doing a great job of everybody.
He really knows what he's doing. This is the fourth time he's done it in town.
Well, we saw the way he would return.
I think, I think we're at his very last one. He's in his, he's in his eighties and got a little boredom, retired a couple of years ago, so we figured. He could help some of the town, he likes Timbits. If I just might, do we want to have Mr. Cox?
I was just thinking that, uh, we would move through the, the agenda items. And if anybody will go through and there will be opportunity to comment on those. And Greg Cox is here from the Vermont Farmers Food Center. So it's a good feature to go with him. So he doesn't have to sit through the rest of our, you know, budget, that question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very lightning.
You want to go closer to the owl?
Great. We have one at the food center. I, I ate them.
They don't like Timbits.
They, well, it's always hard for people that are familiar.
Yeah.
But I'm here from the Vermont Farmers Food Center. Um, as many of you know, um, we host the winter market. And, um, we're, our board members are spread across the, um, county. Uh, we run a lot of food programs, a lot of farm programs, a lot of educational programs. Uh, we were the poster child for everyone eats. We've been doing three types of meals a week. Uh, there is a housing crisis in Vermont, but there's also a food crisis in Vermont. And there's, um, it, it's growing now because a lot of federal funds have been, been cut. And, um, we don't do everyone eats anymore because that funding is cut. But we're pretty creative and we've been gathering funds and we do Ruffin Jimmy Eats. Um, and then we also have a Buddhist medicine program that I love. It's called FARM. F A R M. Food is the medicine. You don't need the drugs. We have bumped up to, I believe it's two hundred and seventy-five, uh, members in that program. We raise money. Um, and we get it from doctors, primary cares, uh, all different methods. And, um, we, we feed people who are economically challenged that have food related illnesses. And, um, as many of you know, obesity, diabetes, heart disease, hypertension. You don't need drugs and curing, even the food. But in, uh, in our food covers, by and large, it's salt, sugar, fat, shelf stable in a can. It is food, but it is food that is contributing to those illnesses. So we also have new and emerging farmers. So the demographics on, that we serve on pharmacy are folks in our community, Tim included. Um, that, um, we raise money, pay new and emerging farmers to grow the food, like a CSA, we pay them for the food, advocate it at the food center. And then we deliver it, or sometimes they come and pick it up, but mainly now, because if you're economically challenged, sometimes you don't have transportation, even go pick up. So we try to bring it to these folks. We have, um, a educational program, um, called Babel, farm-based experiential learning. We've been working with West, West Robin, we've been working with Robin Town, we're trying to expand that program around. We also have educational courses for, uh, the general population from all of Robin County, as well as farmers at our greenhouse in Robin. And, um, so we do a lot of good things. Um, we're a small nonprofit. Uh, but we generate a fair amount of income for the communities. And this year we're reaching out and we're, we're trying to get on the balance in some small way to help fund some of these programs as the federal dollars are being cut. We're trying to do it from grassroots of the way we've always done everything. And if any of you have opened to the farmer's market from the bottom. That market in two thousand and six was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars gross sales. It was a twenty-six week a year market. When we quit it and became a fifty-two week per person, fifty-two week market in the state of Vermont, the sale rose to seven hundred and fifty in two thousand and seven. Like two thousand and fifteen, after we had purchased and renovated the farmer's ball, it was two point one million dollars in sales, farmers. Food center didn't get any of that money. But it went in, in every farmer's pocket that went there. And it also provided the points for, for everyone. We have people that come from, not just Robin County, folks that are from other places. Every dollar spent on local food generates two point six dollars in economic activity. The food center and with the markets in Robin generate over five million dollars in economic activity. That money spills over and to all the communities. So I'm here to ask to, um, have a, an item on the, that would be voted on. Um, that would, uh, the town of Timmit would, would donate two hundred and fifty dollars. And depending on the size of the community, we've been asking from some of the communities more and other communities for less. We're trying to, um, raise that money to expand our programs, expand pharmacy, expand, uh, Rutland County Eats. Um, expand the opportunities for new and young farmers in our community. Like somebody said, one, one dairy farm left in Timmit. We need to replace the dairy farms or dairy farms. And, um, in Vermont, it's over three billion dollars that we collectively eat every year. We want to grow the amount that's Vermont grows and eats themselves. It's an, it's a, not just healing community through food, but healing the economy through finding other forms of agriculture that can grow the farm. So that's my pitch. So that's my pitch.
Thank you.
Can I ask some questions? This is, I've been working for it for a long time, and the kinds of questions that we often get are, how do you save your rates and is it equitable by town size?
Yes, that's what we're.
And are you asking all towns in the county?
We're asking all towns in the county.
All right.
Yeah. More accounts, you know, like sub-variational asking for a hundred dollars, places like that, because it's just left folks putting any money in the pot. And so we can just get a little bit from everyone. We've always managed to do good things with just a little money.
Anyone else have any questions for us?
Same money, how little spent comes back.
Thank you so much, Greg. You don't have to stay through the rest of this, but you are welcome.
I'm just saying a little bit because all I hear is West Ruffin, so it's kind of cool.
Where do we go from here with a request like that?
Well, it's already been approved for the, it's already been approved to be voted on.
Okay.
This was an opportunity for, it's more information to be provided and, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So next on our, back up to the beginning of the agenda, highway budget. We had not officially approved this. Anyone here have any questions about the highway budget?
Thank you. It's crazy weather.
Yeah.
But we don't learn. No question. Do you have any questions? Any comments or ready to approve it?
Yeah, I think we can ask. I mean, always, but I think, I feel like this is, this is what it's gonna get. Give you a quick question, because it looks funny to me. Do we have summer salt or summer sand? No, you know, it says winter salt and winter sand. I mean, if we get into April and need it, we can't use it.
In summer, it's liquid chloride to keep the health pack, once it's rated, the health pack it down. It's a different product.
Right.
And, and probably comes from many years ago when the select board used to have winter and summer accounts. So there'd be, you know, sand that's applied to the winter time. We don't apply sand to someone, we would distinguish that. Let's just kind of go forward.
Somebody might need sand on the beach and so on.
And the, and the A is for putting on top of grassy, mulch.
When I do the ditches.
Stabilization, ground stabilization.
And it used to be in the miscellaneous, and it got to be more than a couple hundred bucks. So that's why we split it out as a separate item.
So are the numbers changing along the left-hand side?
The budget is on the far right inside.
No, no, no. You know, it says number one, number two, number three, but like safety equipment doesn't have a number, A doesn't have a number, cocaine doesn't have a number.
Oh, that's just not having enough time in the day filling those blanks.
Okay, that's fine. I was just.
Not intentional, it's just.
Just curious.
It's not great. It would be great if it was.
Anybody else have anything to add before we go on this? All right. Let her take a motion to approve the highway budget. On motion, on paper, aye and aye. Moving on with the general budget. Anyone here more on Zoom have any questions or comments about the general budget?
We've already approved this one, but.
Well, I think we just need to explain to everybody here that we can, that this two hundred and twenty-one thousand is without adding in the forty-six thousand you're normally spending for service agencies. So you vote, you know.
Right.
Two hundred and one is just a bare budget and then all the articles.
The change in the morning.
We could add another forty-six thousand and so articles to add, but depending for twenty-five thousand. So that would be added to the code that's gonna be raised. Just to let everybody know, you know, the general budget is not really going down. It's.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, with that.
Well, it could go down some. Certainly people aren't gonna go down, not very far. That's the biggest one over there. But just so everybody knows.
Yeah.
Are you talking about after paving?
We did decide we wanted to put on the morning, the ask for twenty-five thousand extra dollars for paving. For the voters to decide they wanted to do that.
Because the road commissioner brought it to the select board's attention, and we devoted a hundred thousand for the last ten or twelve years. And that hundred thousand used to get us one point two miles. Now it gets us point eight miles. So we need to think about that.
And asphalt's gone on forty-eight percent, so probably a good time to think about reusing it.
Forty, eighty percent.
That is according to twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-two prices versus twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two prices.
Wow.
A little bit.
It's a very short period.
I read this, like, we're entertaining the idea of maybe turning up some of the paved roads. Definitely a cost analysis for going back to some dirt roads. I mean, we are going to have to, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars this year is one thing, but if it goes up again and again, we're a small town. At what cost do we say this is enough?
You have the browse, okay, the browse, so I'm.
I don't have browse, but I mean, in all the reality too, you pick the better length out of a road if you can mill it. And we have not been milling because then the amount we can pave is very short. So that means that if we don't mill it, all those cracks that are in the part that we overlaid are gonna come up through much quicker. And pavement has a reverse J curve. It's good for a little while, but then when it fails, it fails quickly.
Explain milling.
Milling is, is when they do the grindings.
And then put it back on them?
Uh, it depends. You can't, if it's a finely ground one, they don't make, they're a pretty good shoulder material. Some plants will recycle it back into the mix, but not all of them. Typically depends on what the state's requiring for recycled asphalt to go back in, what the plants are actually doing. And we're probably just gonna be getting a state mix anyway.
The places that we have done that, probably well, not where that is built. And the other thing I want to mention is we don't, one thing is not gonna keep up with the life cycle, what you just said. But we're gonna start, we don't put up extra money to get extra mileage. We're gonna get behind to a point where we're gonna get really rough or gonna be really expensive to keep them up. But I think it's a great idea. It probably shouldn't be more, but it's a start.
It's our repeating cycle now in years. Anyone?
Kind of ish, but it should be planned.
Our roads are probably less than staple, so yeah, that probably is, I think the state's shooting more for seven, but they have higher volume of traffic, so that makes sense.
We're getting less.
How many miles? Sorry, how many miles? We have a paper. I forget. I'm working to report.
Fourteen miles, so if you only get point eight in here, you're going backwards, basically. We do get a safety, we do get grants every, what is it, six, seven years? So we'll get a big piece. We got mountain view, but still, if you mill it out, then you gotta put that base layer back in at two inches. And then you gotta top it at three quarters. So you go from this to this. And then everybody goes, oh, we didn't give much for three hundred.
But you might go seven to ten.
Right. Yeah, you might go from ten to twelve.
Do we know how much it costs for, to maintain our dirt roads? Can you pull that out for us at some meeting, just out of curiosity?
I can't hear the question.
Dirt roads, how much it costs yearly average to maintain the dirt roads? I would be curious to know. I mean, that may not be a popular opinion, but in the future, it very well may become a viable option for, you know.
I think between grading, fill the rings, off holes, you might be, you might be over.
And, and for someone who drives on these roads, I, I know it's easier for their maintenance to keep the roads good in into weather on the paved roads and not on the dirt roads.
But if we go to dirt roads, that might address some of the other concerns citizens have about speeding in town.
Absolutely.
You have to do that in the adult area.
I remember. I know some neighbors, I mean, some people who started.
But I mean, what I think, and I could be wrong, but I think if you really start digging into it, your dirt roads may be more than paved.
Could you guys do that for us?
I'm looking for it. Figure it out.
And if we're talking about speeding, then I think we need to think about, you know, police enforcement or.
We're trying.
That's, that's, you know. Cause I tried, I tried to get my mail today. And I, I mean, I'm flanking people to slow down and they're just zooming by and they were doing more than fifty, I can guarantee it, on forty mile an hour stretch. They were.
We are.
Zooming.
We are battling that.
Yeah.
Anything else from the general budget? That's where we're at. Any more questions on Zoom, anybody? All right. Do we feel like we've decided on February twenty-fourth for our next informational meeting? Yeah?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, food center? Should we do a hotluck? Make it like food involved, hotluck lunch at noon?
What day is it?
Saturday, February twenty-fourth. No, no, yeah.
We're not.
What, are you having a dinner that day?
We're learning.
I mean, fire department has enough, lots of work, fire, meat, and all kinds of stuff in the green town. If we're planning on having a town, open town, not just anybody, but lots of people. We set the date of the Saturday, but we can also have it happen after the town meeting. Might get more people to come and all get fed, go free.
And that's how it ends.
Sound like you wanna mix it or?
I'll be impressed if more than twenty-five people come, and I would hate to see you having all that food, which is probably not gonna serve a hundred.
Well, the thing is, we're gonna do with any.
No, that's what I'm saying. Do it as a standalone at night. You might get more people.
We probably don't.
I don't know.
It's for fun.
It's always new at noon, and then we start meeting at one, and everybody can love the merch and.
We can trap people.
Some fire departments do coin drops and we do.
We take off.
Um, we thought about seeing every pre-town meeting will be the, the.
Fire departments.
Um, give that aspect, and then we can feed after, or.
Do you wanna try doing this before?
Well, I mean, we, we have the fire department side, but I'm interested, you know, I don't wanna like say, oh.
Right.
Can they be there? But you know, I didn't want any more people coming to vote.
I mean, we could try. Free and healthy, free food.
Well, raise culture, we have to, we're gonna change it, make sure that, that they. We'll have ours set for the one o'clock on Saturday, and the fire department is gonna come and bring food. All the better. We'll let you guys talk amongst yourselves and pick it out. And then we can put it out, you know, and, and a lot of.
Well, one of their rules later, they're wanting to tell me something new, and the four o'clock, I think anybody, you know, right? You know, for the, for the, people aren't allowed to eat dirt, too. Go off if it's up for it.
If we did it.
Except the old folks.
If we did a meeting at three. If we did the meeting at three, we'd probably be eating at five.
Four.
Four.
The meeting's gonna take half an hour for them.
I'm just gonna run over all the question that you're.
Yeah.
You can talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, I think.
It may be in, in.
What are you gonna do?
First of all, we have.
Do you guys remember the last time meeting that we had? Do you guys remember the last time meeting that we had? Anyone?
Yeah.
Do you mean last year where we met for information, or are you meaning the last?
A real.
The last time meeting when we voted to disband town meeting because a lot of people don't really like the concept that, I'm just letting you guys be aware of that. You'll probably get this crowd right here, maybe a few more, but you're not gonna get other people from town, other voters. They're gonna vote, you know, differently.
People vote over their wants, but yeah.
I know, but just like, you're bringing, you're bringing, you're kind of bringing something back that the voters, like, I don't know, they, they made a statement kind of, and it's, you know, fine, you can go have a dinner.
The statement was about four meetings. The statement wasn't about free food and.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
I'm just pointing it out that you'll, you'll probably get this group, this group, we can put people right here, and that's all.
We're likely to get this super big, and we're likely to have another hundred to come be, we're gonna have, so it's a twenty-five.
You could do that, then just put it out there, that we're gonna do it, and just see what happens.
That's a mission we can, that one of our stuff would be issued.
Um, the mission might end up, or.
Um, you know, what time was the fire department planning term? What time of day?
So, you know, what else would you? We've done it for the last couple of years. We went from, we need to step into people.
Yeah, you see, I don't vote because I'm a vegetarian. But I can vomit from eating.
So we're gonna. All this, all kinds of stuff. Bring it on.
Yeah, yeah, very, very far.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna set the time for that meeting to three. We're gonna change it to three.
And as people work and do stuff throughout the day.
Yeah. And then there'll be early dinner, and then people on them.
And then entertain them.
Yeah.
Depends what they want to be or not, so it's gonna be long.
I don't think the fire department should lock the doors. Now that's safety day.
So that'll be our plan, and then when Gail comes back, we can do it that way. So that'll be our plan and then once Gail comes back and we can do it that way.
February twenty fourth, three o'clock.
Yeah, I think we've just about covered everything. We just haven't approved the warning, which might be more.
You might want me to go forward, I thought.
Well, we were thinking that the, the remaining dairy farmers may be able to come if it's a. They start towards that four and seven. Yeah.
It is. It's like a huge leeway of that.
They shoot before.
I'm ish a lot. This can be a. Then it's for eight hours, wouldn't know.
Uh, we don't have, have I covered everything else? Like, does anything I missed or is anybody making up that wanna bring up? Do we need to move to approve the morning with? I think she's re-located, um, so we can. Wait till she comes back or.
Did, maybe did you touch on the allotments? Whoa.
Yeah. We, we did change this year to vote on the allotments individually. Um, does anybody have any questions or concerns about that switch?
So my idea was that we reintroduce the allotments to this year's town meeting. And then vote on them again individually and. Um, and maybe set it up so when we are revisiting these allotments. Every three-ish years. Um. Just so that these allotments are not.
Set in stone.
Set in stone and not just pushed out for another twenty years. So that everybody gets a chance to see them periodically. And re-vote on them. Your views, your views may change, you know.
And the idea being that this year they will all be set for revisiting in three to five years. And any new ones that come up, make an ask next year would be another, they were approved, it would be three years from next year. So eventually they'll be staggered, so every year you'll be voting on some, but.
And what is the problem that you're trying to solve?
Just so that everybody sees what we're spending on the arms.
What do you mean by sees? Cause it's right here. You mean so that everyone could.
Can see what each allotment is.
You can, it's right here in the budget, it's in your town report.
Yeah, but you want, you want support one and not the other.
I agree with that.
You no longer have to say it's either yes or no for the entire. The entire allotment, so if you wanna.
I didn't even know about this.
If you wanna from group A or not from B, you don't have a choice. The way you've been doing it, it's either yes or no for the entire thing, so this guy says, yeah, I still want to support A, B, no, not so much.
So as someone who has counted ballots for many years.
That's why we're only gonna do it every.
I would like to finish. I would like to express my concern about this and I will need to count ballots, so if you couldn't find out the people great. The thing is that it's a lot more work for our councillor to run the election and it's counting so many more ballots. And that's really, really tiny to me and I don't wanna dismiss the idea that. You just tend to do that, like, yes, people should have them, yeah. I don't. I, that's why I wanna know, like. Is it the big ones, the twenty five thousand for the fire department, is it the little ones, fifty dollars for greenup? Is there some other way to think about it that would? Give people more ability to vote, but not. It's probably more than quadruple the time it takes to count the ballots. Um, and middle town used to struggle with this and it'd be interesting to talk with people who've counted ballots there. They eventually got themselves a voting machine, which I think makes it a moot point and then absolutely. Make as many different things as you want, cause all you're doing is feeding it in. But when you have to sit there with every single ballot and let's hope there are many, because that's the right answer. If you have to tick off thirty or forty different yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, it's just very, very tiny. And I would like to express my concern about that and that, you know, I think that. It's a balance and I see you trying to work on that. But, um. I, I hope you all enjoy counting ballots, I mean, it's just gonna be a really long time. And I, I would hope that you could recruit an awful lot more people to count ballots because. It is a lot.
Maybe as a compromise, you could consider revisiting this every five years. And then it's not, you know, three years, that it's shorter than every three years, through that issue. Yeah, no, I'm just saying that would be, you know. Right, and that's. Might make it a little bit. Fifty-five years.
And mostly I could be wrong and so assess after this one. Right, like, oh, look, people got out of there at midnight, wow, that was really hard.
If it's midnight every five years. Is what it is. But it gives them a chance.
Every year, there will be a lot. It won't be, it won't be, every year there will be a lot, maybe not as many as this, but.
Be asked when those votes come in and talk.
Yeah, and I think ideally, we would have made that decision a lot earlier so that. Uh, everyone would have had the opportunity, um, like Greg had tonight and hopefully people will have time if they wanna come to the informational meeting on the twenty fourth. Um. I do think we should consider. Asking if they wanna have a paragraph, send a paragraph and have there be some printout that says what they are and what they do. Um. If you're really passionate about one, write up a paragraph and it's a game, have like the fails. Well, I think there's like some of the people may not know what they're doing, but like Brock, some people will know what Brock was doing, other people may not know what Brock was doing. Um. Just like if it was two or three sentences and you could often not have that information or you could, but I think. We are also, uh. You know, these are all organizations that have probably already made their budgets. And so it could be at least a courtesy to give them the opportunity to. Provide something for our voters to. Inform them.
Just to play devil's advocate, what if you put it towards the people and, and they vote, not to give the volunteer fire department any money? You know, vote no, then what do we do?
Then they don't.
Then we don't get it.
Yeah.
Then they apply again next year.
Coin drop.
And nobody leaves on.
But this hasn't been, this hasn't been laid out and visited for years. And I, and I'd like. That's changed.
So would it, would it be appropriate to ask? Each one of those, somehow they gotta be contacted in the next couple of weeks. To send everything and have it on a piece of paper so people could. Like if you didn't know what Brock was, you could look down for the list, they would say, you know, we. Rehab, which they do in town as well, or if it's. The fire department and everybody else, at least you have an idea of what each one is and what they're giving. And it'd be a courtesy to them to, to say the thing and then it would give people, you know. The opportunity to look at what they, that they do. Just, even just on a hand.
I think, I think also, um. We're trying to do something here that was so much easier when we had town meeting, when people could say, hey. I think the fire department needs thirty thousand dollars and then we can talk about it and discuss it and vote on it and we can't. If we only have up or down, which is what we have, is up or down, I, I'm afraid that some good things might be voted down. Just because people.
Can I make a suggestion? Um. I had suggested at the last select board meeting, but instead of doing all of them. We look and each year do maybe ten or fifteen at a time. So you get approved kind of for three years and it's a smaller number of. Now, it's.
The old, the most senior.
Am I interrupting somebody?
No, Kevin was agreeing with you.
Oh, okay, um, and, and that would just make more sense, we'd have less information to have to digest at once. And you know, you approve it for three years, then Kevin, you get to review it. And I just think that would make it easier for the ballot counters and for the voters to look at ten items or. Whatever a third of however many we support are, so that was my comment.
I think the tendency is gonna rush through it because it's, it's just so much all of a sudden. We've not done it this way and now to ask everybody to do line by line. And if you think about it too, some of the things like fifty dollars for the conservation commission, you know, is it worth that? Is it worth the extra line items on the ballot and the extra counting for that much money? Or is it better to batch those things? Um, and, and you know, this is all part of living in a community that greenup day is important. It's a, it's a community event and for people who have never attended, maybe they just think, okay, my taxes are going up, I don't wanna vote for any of this. And, and I think that's, you know, that could be a problem when you do this line by line, especially for the nickel and dime items.
Yol, do you wanna say something?
What I can say is when we were working on preparing these articles, the league of cities and towns have just done a thing for. Statewide, most towns I think do it this way. The way when you're doing it, this, this. Because they went to the trouble of telling people that you have to, you can only say, shall the voters appropriate a sum? To who it's going to for the purpose of. And you can't put anything in there that would say, well, we wanna give it to the children's society to help them be loving and caring children. You can't do that, you gotta keep it.
It can't be biased.
The purpose, yes, you're not supposed to put anything in any of the articles that is biased. That would, a bias one way or the other is a port for. Um. You know, we looked at Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury wrote, it's all there's, middle town has to do it because a judge told them they have to do it that way.
Mike.
I, I think, I think, I'm just saying, if, I mean, you can pretty well agree to do it this way this year. But if somebody, the fire department doesn't wanna send in a blurb that says. You know, we need the money because, um, you know, the voters pay town and county and we have this much responsibility, blah, blah, blah. Um, then. There might be less chance, so in, in years past, some people wanted to say like. I don't know, the national road association, but they never showed up at town meetings. And it was usually voted on once and then it was. Either not or not, and if they didn't show up, people didn't do it, so if you ask these people for a paragraph. So that we can all look at it and if some of them don't respond, then it won't just be anything, they're being. Rose it, we're like, why? I have no idea, but if it was. Like, 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 I mean, we, you know, what the food thing does and we know. And a blurb, a paragraph would say that, so you know what that is, but that could be undoubted. But if it'd be on a piece of paper, you can hand out. That each one's explained what they are, so then people would have an idea. Uh, cause like you said, Brock, what's Brock, you know?
And it would be in their own, they, it would be provided by the organization, not right that.
Right, the organization would send you a.
Right, I think it's up to the organization.
And then if they don't, then the line is there, no explanation of what it is, but for the ones that are. At least you know what you're, what they are, what they stand for and maybe give an idea if you want to or not want to vote for them.
You can even go one step farther, if they don't submit a little paragraph, you just, and let them know that there'll just be a limited, uh, you know, the ballot. And that would be, be an incentive for them to write something out to give them to the voters. Which, you know, this is, you know, the town voted to go to Australian ballot to vote, you know, this is an opportunity. For the voter to show up and vote as much as possible, vote more. You know, and I think that that is an absolutely excellent idea and, you know, if we're gonna binge about counting a few more ballots here and there, like, we will find more people. You know, it's not that much more to do, it's.
And, but we, and we may not keep it, we may separate it out so as. So there's not so many that's a year, without a certain amount. Per year, yeah, but we got, this is not set in stone.
I can say. Excuse me, I can say, some of these people have not sent us a request in years and still we've been given the money. Sometimes they change addresses, so the checks that we write them come back. When Ernie Bulley was on the select board, he wouldn't give anybody their money until they sent a request for it. And then after a while, we decided that was too much postage going back and forth, so we just started writing the checks. Well, you know.
That sounds like Ernie.
At the old, uh, town meeting, people would come and they would take half an hour to ask for the fifty dollars, so that's why the select board started. Saying, you come to the select board, we'll decide it should be, it should be on the ballot, you know, and.
So what happened then is what's happening right now, we got, it's. In, in proportion of the budget, we'll spend more, more time than we're talking about.
About fifty dollars.
Two and a half million dollars.
Right. So anyways, it's.
I would suggest that you call the secretary of state about not treating all allocations the same every year like that. I understand why you're saying it, but I just check, cause that seems a little unusual and maybe you. Need to think through that in terms of a formalized process.
I'd like to check with the league of cities and towns, they just sort of.
Yeah.
Let's go. How did I look properly?
And you can't do that?
No, I said, I will check.
We'll check.
I think we go, I pretended, the webinar, they did not tell the towns how to write their articles properly.
And you're, you're asking specifically about like how we either have to do all of them.
I don't know, I think you should check.
Yeah.
I think. It's worth checking and, you know, if the town clerk, it sounds to me like. Uh, these lovely ideas are going to increase the amount of work that you have to do significantly and. I think that some of these ideas could be great. Um, you know, asking everyone to write the paragraph, but like, we're so late in the season right now that that's. Um. Tough and. So. Who's gonna put that together, who's gonna make all of the tests, you know, like, we're asking our town clerk to double or triple her, what's the amount of work she does? So just.
Why don't we ask?
Carefully about how to implement this.
Why don't we ask the voters? Why don't we ask the voters this time around and that gives some breathing room, if that's what they would like to see?
We did talk about that.
So I'm more willing to do it this way if they want to.
Ben, did you answer?
So the other thing is, Kathy's saying about it, how do we implement this thing, so you have this thirty different paragraphs. On a piece of paper, when, how are you gonna get that to the voters? Cause the people were voting by mail. And then it's gonna be built to coming in and when are they gonna read it, are they gonna read it as they come in to vote or they, to make it fair and they have to mail it?
Yeah, I, I think everything is gonna get approved. I think we're arguing about something, I don't know, when I look at. I was looking at middle town and Shrewsbury's town and ports because they vote on all these things and everything gets approved. But it gives, you know, two hundred to fifty, it gives those fifty people a chance to say yes or no. So. You know, if five of them get disapproved, then maybe we need to figure something else out, but I think. I'm not quite sure what you're all about. I could be wrong.
Well, I did.
But it's just.
I need extra help or somebody else to send in people left on the record or call or. You know.
Planning on getting like letting in.
Many towns require these people to all go get petitions.
Right, I mean, we're.
Right, it's on the ballot, it's like the plan was, it's just gonna be on the ballot, we're gonna vote for it this year. And then look at it and then next year, it probably won't be on the ballot.
No, and how are we gonna get the information between now and then, what Kathy said is. You know, I think somebody's got it from no place, we've got three other one paragraph to fill it, we just changed the rule. And they didn't know it.
They're still on the ballot for.
No, but the people don't know what those things are, and so we're asking Brock to say, oh, we need paragraph by. Monday, or, or, or just be a.
This year, we're not, we're just putting it on the ballot, people are gonna vote yay or nay.
Oh, I'm saying, people, it'd be nice for people to have, you know, what's the vote?
I mean, that's the whole point is it doesn't have to happen this.
Most of these people that are on this list. This one. On five or something.
Right.
All right, so we get formal requests from six. Alright, so we get formal requests from six or seven. They take the time to actually send a report to the town. I mean, they're all supposed to justify that they are indeed providing a service to people in Tim, in Tim, not just in general. Um. One or two will call and say, hey, we need to get a petition this year. And I say, no, you don't. Should put that in, you know, I talked to somebody from this organization last year. So I will do my best. We will let everybody know that it's on the ballot. And if they choose to do something, then it's up to them.
And then if we decide that we are gonna revisit it in five years, then we would put it out. And there's enough, there's enough time and fans for everybody to do that.
Right. And probably what the select board could do is appoint an ad hoc committee that's gonna send every one of these entities a letter in the next coming year and say, hey, if you want to be on Tim ballot, you need to provide information that shows that you are actually providing services to X number of people within.
I'm wondering if this, I don't know what's going on with Tim's website, cause I can't find it, but um, kind of this information we put on the website as well.
Yeah.
I believe so. We switched to dot gov.
Speaking of the website, I just tried to get on and see if it was booked for February twenty-fourth. I can't get past January.
Yeah.
So I don't want to go on with it.
We did just switch to it's timetvma dot gov.
To, to the timetv t dot gov org. It's now timetv t dot gov.
Dot gov, okay.
And some people would have trouble getting on foot and others are not, so. But I tried calling Trish and putting against the bed, she didn't answer her phone. So I went to the website to see if I could figure out if somebody had reserved the seventeenth or twenty-fourth and I was not in the.
Seventeenth is reserved for Tim the Fire Department and the twenty-fourth is open.
Okay.
And for the record, if you go onto the old name, the v t dot org, you get right in. And if you go to dot gov, your web, I don't even understand it. It was explaining to me that it takes a few months for the web to learn you or something.
I don't understand. I, I also haven't found it yet. So.
See, look, I just did it on my phone and I'm totally ready.
Um, thank you, Greg.
Thanks for that, Greg. Yeah. Clear.
Do you now have a very, like, we, we have made some edits to the warnings. Should we make those edits? Can we just write them on a warning?
Well, I wrote a change of date on the one.
Uh, we changed the time, the time.
Okay.
And then Greg's number was, didn't include the hundred. So, hi, now, so.
Alright, then I will go.
We need more than an hour for it.
I will go for it.
This, a lot of stuff's gonna happen.
Dinner will be, uh, when it is.
Dinner will fall.
Dinner to fall.
Very, very.
Yes.
I don't think there's anything else. We're just voting to approve this warning.
The warnings on.
And silence. I don't believe there's anything else. We're gonna do that. We're gonna be kind of any of those that.
Very much.
The pond is reenact.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. Hey, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So what happens? Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Switched back. So he don't mind. Yes. They're fine. Yeah. I will be, pray and.
They didn't even have to.
Oh, my, they love my care. Yeah, that word.
Um.
Seven in the morning, seven in the morning.
Feeding in there.
That's why, that's why we can't drive. Go to the right part of five. They have to be, but it's later than I knew Brock was taking. So. Those things. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna have five, you're gonna load.
I like, I like.